You are watching K O C T's North County Roundtable. On today's show, we have candidates for the Oceanside City Council District Two.
Welcome to this special election edition of K O C T's North County Roundtable. I'm your host Kent Davey. On August 1st, 2017, the Oceanside City Council voted to adopt an ordinance establishing by district elections for city council offices. On this special election edition of North County Roundtable, we will be featuring the candidates for Oceanside City Council District Number Two. If you're an Oceanside resident watching this program and want to know more about districting, what district you belong to, please log into the City of Oceanside website. The format of today's show will begin with one-minute self-introductions, followed by questions and answers. We've asked our candidates to keep their responses to one minute so we can get in as many questions as possible. We'll take a brief break at the half-hour mark, followed by more questions and brief closing statements. So let's get started. Dana with an opening statement.
Thank you Kent. My name's Dana Corso and I'm running for Oceanside District Two, Oceanside City Council District Two. My husband and I have been married for 25 years and we moved into Jeffries Ranch about 21 years ago. We have two sons we've been raising in the neighborhood. About 10 years ago, my neighborhood was directly impacted by the widening of 76 and I spearheaded the efforts to stop that for safety purposes. And in doing so, I met with many other neighbors that were not being heard and disregarded by our council majority at that time and we formed Action. Action stands for the Alliance of Citizens to Improve Oceanside Neighborhoods. Action has fought many different fights and the most prominent one that we fought was the No on E and F which saved the homes of the seniors and veterans and families on fixed incomes in the mobile home communities. We fought against the Gregory Canyon landfill which is a main, you know, we didn't want to disrupt our water resources. We fought against the puppy mills here in Oceanside which is very important for our animals. We fought against the outsourcing of our police and fire. I think it's critical that we maintain our police and fire in the City of Oceanside. And most recently, the SOAR initiative's been put on the ballot and I'm behind that from day one. I think it's critical for the City of Oceanside to maintain the general plan that we have in place and that we have 2 and 1/2 acres and one dwelling on 2 and 1/2 acres. It's always been zoned that way and so I feel that we need to keep it that way for the City of Oceanside.
Thank you. Terry?
Thank you Kent. My name is Terry Johnson and I'm a candidate for Oceanside City Council District Two. I'm a lifelong resident of Oceanside. I've lived in District Two for 38 years. I'm also your former mayor and council member, having served you for 12 years in the past. And on that note, I can say I am the official senior citizen of this distinguished body running for city council this time around and I'm seeking your vote to represent someone that really understands our district, which happens to be the most diverse district of all the districts in Oceanside. We need someone that knows the region and can really do the best job in representing everyone in District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Hello. My name is Chris Kagan. I currently live in District Two with my loving wife Samantha and my newborn son Ryan. I am the finance executive at Scientist.com which is the ninth fastest growing private company in the U.S. It is our mission to make it possible to cure all human diseases by 2050. It is my personal mission to make Oceanside the best it can be. I have a three core principle platform. It's about growth and opportunity, risk and cost management, and legacy and happiness. My District Two plan will combine all three of those. It's about new businesses. It's about strengthening our education. It's about putting a protection to crime and a stop to natural disasters, affordable housing in District Two. And at the end of it, I really believe that we should, the people of Oceanside should have an opinion and a voice of how Oceanside is developed and how the legacy of Oceanside will continue to grow.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you Kent. My name is Larry Cornet and as you can tell, I'm running for Oceanside City Council in District Two. My wife and I, Lauren, have been married for 27 years. We have two dogs. We've been in Oceanside for close to 20 years. The things that are important to me are hopefully important to you. Our traffic on 76 is horrendous. In District Two, we're talking about building another 750 homes which will put an additional close to 1,500 cars on the road because these homes aren't built near mass transit, so people are going to have to have cars. I'm also a firm believer and honor everybody's service in their community who's sitting on this dais. However, my service to the community has been in a different way. I fought against gun violence. I fought for saving our planet. I fought for helping the homeless, helping our transitioning veterans, not just in District Two and not just in Oceanside, but everywhere we possibly can to make a difference. It's important to me to be able to have a community feeling all over the country and all over the world for that matter. It's important to me, hopefully it's important to you, and I hope that I'm able to earn your vote come November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you Larry. Christopher?
Thank you Kent. Hello, Oceanside. My name is Christopher Rodriguez. I am a veteran, farmer, and small business owner. And courtesy of the United States Marine Corps, 16 years ago, I came to beautiful Oceanside. After serving four years and two combat tours in Iraq, I started my own business, a mortgage and real estate company locally. I've been heavily involved with the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, including being on the Board of Directors and on the Executive Committee. I love Oceanside. I have a beautiful wife named Sarah. I have four boys and two girls. We have a farm where we grow avocados, guava, passion fruit, and recently we've planted coffee. The reason I'm running is I want to make Oceanside safer. That's my number-one priority. And I'm the only candidate that has been endorsed by the Oceanside Police Officers Association because of my firm stance on public safety. I also want to bring to Oceanside a much more business-friendly climate. I believe that Oceanside can be the most business-friendly city in North San Diego County. I also would like to bring housing affordability locally and solve together the issue of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you Christopher. Dana, we'll start questions with you. You mentioned in your opening that you're supportive of SOAR, or let's back that up. I want to go back and do the other major. Do you support Measure X, the sales tax?
You know Kent, I was at the June 6th council meeting when the police and fire and many other people were there, talking with the council, trying to get that on the ballot. And I do believe in the voters making that decision. I think that the people have the right to make that decision. My grandfather was the chief of the police department. I have the utmost respect for the police department. I also would like to say that I have withdrawn any requests for endorsements from any unions, including the police and fire. I believe that unfortunately, we have a council right now that has been handpicking, our mayor was appointed, our treasurer was appointed, our commissioners were appointed. And so I would have a hard time putting that money into their hands. And so my theory is that we really have to change this council to get a council that really supports the neighborhoods, that puts the people here first, so that we know that that money is going to be spent appropriately and not on roads, for instance, like my neighborhood, Melrose Extension, where the community has been saying no to that. It's pretty critical that we don't impose, you know, the Melrose Extension.
Okay. Terry, same question. Do you support Measure X?
Yes, I do. And simply because Oceanside is facing another financial crisis. Having served for 12 years as the mayor and as a council member, having gone through a crisis before, understanding the severity of the cuts that were necessary at that time and what could happen again presently if the proposition does not pass. It's on the ballot. I respect the right of the voters to vote it up or vote it down and I support it 100%.
Okay. Chris?
I too am in favor of the democratic process. It's up to the people of Oceanside. But ultimately, currently, the sales tax in Oceanside is 7.75%. This will bring it up to 8.25%. Currently, Oceanside gets 1% of that sales tax, so now they'll get 1.5% of that sales tax. That's a 50% increase. People think this is just going to hit the people of Oceanside, but actually 63% of that revenue comes from tourism. So this is a way for revenue, it's a revenue generating initiative for Oceanside that can hit some of the tourism that will come. And if we boost that tourism, we'll increase more money. There is currently, as Terry mentioned, a financial crisis in Oceanside. We need this initiative to pass so we can curb the debt that we currently have. And it's my goal, if elected, as a finance executive right now, to continue to grow our revenue while reducing our costs. That is what my specialty is. So if you want to make sure that our debt goes away, vote me.
Okay. Thank you. Larry?
Thank you Kent. Absolutely, Measure X has to pass and I am fully supportive of it. A couple of reasons is that we have employees, police, fire, city police and city employees that have deferred salaries in the name of pensions. Those have to be funded. And right now, the PERS is making, we're told, 6%. In reality, it actually looks like it's making 12%. So those monies can go down. We also need this influx quickly because District Two doesn't have an ambulance to its name. So we need to get one there. These monies can help. But there's something else that's even more important. And that is remember that this half percent sales tax does not go to essentials. It doesn't go to groceries. It doesn't go to medical. And so because of those things, because we're looking at not 1%, but the 1 and 1/2% increase, which would bring an additional $11 million to the city per year, it needs to pass.
Okay. Thank you. Christopher?
Thank you Kent. In general, I'm against raising taxes. Our police and fire have many needs to fully satisfy all the calls they get every year and the number-one thing I'm on board for is bringing in additional revenue through multiple streams here in Oceanside that we can really, lost my train of thought.
Okay. We're talking about your view of the tax proposition, the one cent or half cent sales tax?
Got it. And so with that being said, personally, since I generally do not agree in raising taxes, I'll be personally voting no.
Okay. Question number two. Terry, given that the city is struggling with some financial constraints, the Measure X is an open question, I suppose, at this point. What would be your top priority for infrastructure improvement if the money's there?
If the money becomes available, the number-one priority for infrastructure would be the ongoing street maintenance. Secondly, I would say rebuilding the beach restrooms that have been on the back burner for way too long that need to be rebuilt or completely torn down and rebuilt. Thirdly, I would say we need to take a look at our water infrastructure system. Over the years, we have talked about the rates and how we need to stabilize them and those would be my top three concerns regarding infrastructure.
Okay. Chris, same question.
Thank you. I think the number-one thing that we need to do is we need to build a District Two plan. We have a nine-block master plan for downtown, nine blocks. Oceanside is 42 square miles big. There's no other plan for the rest of Oceanside. And the reason why this is important is because all these small individual plans throughout Oceanside and District Two do not connect, right? We build a road, but we don't think about how is that considered to bike safety. We build houses, but we don't think about the traffic that it brings. What we need to do is we need to focus on the roads. We need to focus on the scores. We need to focus on the crime and we need to focus on the natural disasters. Currently, in District Two, we have mobile homes. We have homeless. We have, you know, agriculture. What we need to think is how all the community comes together as one and how we can build a District Two plan that incorporates all these things so we can start building infrastructure around that plan.
Thank you. Larry, same question.
To me, it's within District Two, we have incredible wealth disparity. Jeffries Ranch, where I live and where Dana lives, has some beautiful homes and some relatively affordable homes. But you go to the areas of Arthur and Gold off of Vandergrift and you see some really wealth-desperate homes and streets and areas. Not enough lighting. We went canvassing there a couple of weeks ago. As soon as the sun went down, you couldn't see your hands. So lighting, general lighting in those areas to make them safer, I think, would be essential. Speed bumps to be able to prevent people from flying through. Kids do play there. You don't want that to happen. But it's about our communities. It's about our local communities and we need to give them a hand up, not a hand out. I think that fixing areas where water and sewer may be an issue, absolutely. But my main priority would be to pay people the deferred salaries that they're owed.
Okay. Christopher?
Yes. When it comes to infrastructure improvements, public safety is my number-one priority. I do believe that our roads, they need to be repaired. There's a lot of rough roads in District Two and all of Oceanside that would need to be repaved. We need traffic studies to better the traffic flow. The current plan here in Oceanside, I'm sure did not accommodate the 180,000-plus residents that we currently have. And we all experience that every day as we drive up and down College or El Camino Real or on and off to 76 and 78, the traffic issues. And so traffic studies, improving the technology within our lighting systems. And I would also agree that we do need increased lighting in many neighborhoods. We need an ambulance in District Two. We do not currently have an ambulance located in District Two that can help offset the calls that are being received. A lot of our firehouses are just out of code. They're not in the conditions that our firemen need in order to sufficiently assist our neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you. Dana?
I would like to talk about South Morale Hills and the roads out there because since that's been at the forefront lately, the roads are terrible out there. There is no infrastructure out there. There's no sewers. The roads are not, it's one lane. It's been that way for the last 30 years that I've known of. I think that we're consistently putting the cart before the horse and I think that the farmers out there have been working on a vision plan to bring more agritourism out to South Morale Hills. And so therefore, I'm, I think that the city, you know, is looking for that type of vibrancy and that type of character. And so I think we should start by perhaps working on the roads out in South Morale Hills and the infrastructure out there so that down the road, we can possibly, you know, consider different types of developments that would be conducive to the area. My neighborhood, Jeffries Ranch, they did come through and they paved some of the streets. They did a lousy job. I was very disappointed. They were just there today, as a matter of fact, trying to re-patch some of the things. So I think that, and some of the lighting is also bad in Rancho Del Loro. I've had lots of people talk to me about how the neighborhoods are not lit after dark and that to me is critical for our kids to be out, you know. In the neighborhoods, we've got to have lighting as well.
Okay. Thank you. Chris, should Oceanside change the way that it handles emergency calls and let ambulances roll without sending fire trucks?
I think this is a great question. A few months ago, my wife and I, we have a security system. The security system actually went off. And an hour went by and the police never showed up. We got a call from the security company and they said, "Did the police ever show up?" And they said, "Well, did." So if it's a choice of an ambulance showing up without the police, the fire trucks, or the ambulance not showing up at all, we need the ambulance to start showing up to the places. We need the police start showing up, the callers for security calls. And we need the fire to start showing up to the different fires that are going on. And that's why we need to put more money into these different areas. As Chris mentioned before, we don't have an ambulance. We only have one fire station in District Two. We need to start building out our protections in the local community. We need to make sure that we have adequate, you know, police, fire, and health and ambulance in District Two. And so with that, I would say that ambulance should be going without fire trucks.
Larry?
You know, if we had the equipment that we really needed, it wouldn't be an issue. But we don't. Unfortunately, sending fire trucks with ambulances if there's no fire or for no reason does not necessarily make sense. The dispatchers, and I used to work for AT&amp;T, the dispatchers that work with emergency responders are pretty well adept at being able to figure out whether both an ambulance and a fire truck need to go somewhere or whether they don't. I think we need to give the trust to our first responders to decide whether both should be dispatched or not. But to have it as a system that we send out both doesn't really make sense financially, doesn't necessarily make sense for the people who are our first responders because it's important to make sure that they're taken care of as well. So I would absolutely say that if there is a situation where all you needed to do was send an ambulance, I absolutely would support that.
Okay. Thank you. Christopher?
Thank you. Can you repeat the question? Should fire trucks always roll with every ambulance call? Got it. No, I do not think that fire trucks should roll with every ambulance call. There was a forecast that by 2020, we would receive in the City of Oceanside 20,000 calls and we've already exceeded that number currently. And because of that, our safety sector, our police and fire, they need more supporting staff. They need better equipment so that fire trucks are not being sent to non-emergency or non-essential situations because it costs gas, it costs time, it costs man-hours to be going and escorting these sort of situations. And so, no, absolutely not, to answer your question. I do not think that a fire truck should be responding to every call.
Okay. Thank you. Dana?
A few years back, the council majority tried to outsource our police and fire and the, they were trying to have EMTs on our trucks instead of paramedics. And paramedics are trained to perform lifesaving procedures. As long as our ambulances have paramedics on them and they can perform lifesaving procedures, then I think that the paramedics or the ambulances are okay to go out there without the fire trucks. So I would agree that, you know, that the fire trucks are not necessary as long as our ambulances are equipped with paramedics that can perform that lifesaving procedures. Thank you.
Terry, same question.
Thank you. Kent, everything comes down to finances. Whether we have enough resources to provide all the city services necessary or wanted, none of us sitting up here are fire service experts and I would say we need to leave that to the experts. But I believe that when you have your first responders responding, they need to have adequate backup and support for whatever call they're on. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, I'd like to ask, as a second, or excuse me, Larry, I'm going to skip one. Larry, I'd like to ask, as a second district representative, where's your values, your obligation, and your attention? Is it to the district or to the city?
It's the same question you'd probably ask a congressman or a state assembly person or a state senator. It has to be a balancing act. You want to make sure that your district that you're representing gets the services that they require, gets the financial support that they need from the city. But I also believe the decisions that are in the best interest of the city are going to be in the best interest of the district. However, when you're being, when you're being voted in to represent a district, you have to make sure that your constituents understand that they have your ear and what's going to be important to them is obviously going to be important to you.
Okay. Christopher?
Yes. Balance is key. I must both master my district and understanding all of its needs as well as our beautiful city. And in moving forward, this is something that whoever is elected must learn and take very seriously to balance both the needs of a district and a city. Thank you.
Dana?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Your, do your, where do your values most closely align with the district and your obligations? Most closely with the district or with the city in general, citywide?
I would say citywide. I've been fighting issues that face the entire city. And honestly, I don't think that the city was too happy with the district elections either. I would be focusing strictly on District Two, but of course, it's going to take votes from all of the council members in order to make anything pass. And so we need a council that's going to work together, that is, you know, consistent with the neighborhoods and with the values that we should have in place. And so many issues will affect all of us. The SOAR initiative will affect all of us. The Gregory Canyon landfill would have affected all of us. Outsourcing our police and fire will affect all of us. So in my response, I believe that it's critical to maintain a citywide look out for everybody.
Okay. Terry?
Kent, thank you. As a lifelong resident, as your former mayor, and also as a former councilman who served you for 12 years, who learned the importance of working within a team concept and building consensus, there's a rule of three. It takes three votes to get anything done in the city. Now, for the first time, we will have a district rep. You will be the advocate. You'll be the voice for your district. And that's very important. It's also very important that you be able to work hand-in-hand with the rest of the team and have a very good working relationship with staff and the entire San Diego County region. And that's why I bring to the table, with all due respect to the other candidates, I've been there, I've done that, I have the experience, and District Two needs a sensible and experienced leader to represent District Two. Thank you.
Chris, same question.
As I mentioned before, my goal is to make a District Two plan. This is a, I'm a District Two candidate. The thing is, I'm all for collaboration. Basically, the way that I look at it is you've got to weigh what's most important to District Two and balance that against what's most important against Oceanside. But that currently, District Two has been left behind. The schools are failing. We have no police presence. We have no ambulance presence and we have no fire presence like the other districts. So my goal right off the bat is to make sure District Two is brought up to speed to where we are at. We still have crime in the area. We still have homeless in the area. We still have affordable housing issue in the area. We need to make sure that District Two is taken care of first and alongside making sure that it can work with the rest of Oceanside. But the whole point of the district election is to give the District Two people a voice. I am that voice for the District Two. I believe building out a plan finally for District Two will allow District Two to catch up to the rest of Oceanside.
Okay. Christopher, there has been much discussion in the press and in public policy settings about the unaffordability of housing in San Diego County, in North County, the notion that my kids have a difficult time trying to find a house to become homebuyers. There is a homeless issue, homelessness issue here in North County. What do we do about housing stock, housing affordability, and homelessness?
Very good. So our state has enacted requirements by every county to build and each county allocates a minimum number of houses that must be zoned and prepared to build within each city. So every city feels the pressure. Housing affordability is very essential to me and is dear to my heart. Being in real estate, understanding how title works, property use, zoning, I can tell you that the number-one thing to housing affordability is we must build. But we must build in a smart way. We must build in a way that shortens the time from start to finish so that we could alleviate a lot of the environmental costs and pressures that our state is putting on us so that in time, in saving time, we save money which translates to more affordable housing. We also need to be creative in where we build and how we build. Secondly, I believe that we need to be more business-friendly. In being more business-friendly, we will attract higher-paying jobs locally because I believe if you live in Oceanside, you should be able to afford to live here in Oceanside. Thank you.
Dana?
So I believe that we're almost on target with the housing numbers that we're supposed to be at per the county. And affordable housing should be placed in areas where our general plan dictates that. We've got a well-thought-out, updated plan that shows that there's areas where there's affordable housing that should be placed, you know, near transit, near public transit, where there's shopping, you know, where people can walk to stores and so forth. I do agree that the homeless problem is a terrible, terrible issue that we're facing every day more and more. This city is, you know, with the climate that we have here, you know, it's, I guess it's, you know, kind of concerning that people have to stay and live outside or outdoors or in the hills. I've got lots of people that have complained and it's just, it's awful. We shouldn't be closing down soup kitchens and some of the resources that we have. We need to be supporting those issues. We need to make sure that we have all the resources in place to help these people. I think that we have, okay, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Terry?
Yes, thank you. A number of years ago, when I first came on the city council, Oceanside was not a very nice city to do anything. But then collectively, many organizations... But then collectively, many organizations, many individuals, and council and staff started working together. And it took about, I'd say, almost 10 years for us as a collective group to clean up City, to clean up Oceanside, to get it to a point where investors and buyers and families wouldn't want to come here to live, work, and start a business. We have now become the victim of our own success. We have become so successful that housing here is no longer affordable. At one time, except for the city of Mayby and Pearl Beach, Oceanside had some of the cheapest beachfront property and housing stock anywhere in the county of San Diego. That is no longer true. So how are we going to resolve the issue that every city in the state is now facing? I do not have a 100% answer for it, but I know with all the great minds that we have in the city, as we have done in the past, we will resolve that problem presently. Thank you.
Okay. Chris?
Jeff Bezos, the CEO of Amazon, came out today to create a foundation for homeless. It's those out-of-the-box ideas that if elected councilmen, a city council for District 2, that I hope to bring to the city. You know, there's three issues here. It's about the number of houses for the middle class. It's about affordable housing, and it's about the homeless. There's a lot of things here, and this is why we really do need a District 2 plan, a master plan for all of Oceanside to be able to handle all those issues. There is a shortage of housing. There's a shortage of affordable housing, and there's a lot of homeless out there. And for if we just tackle the homeless situation, we need to make sure that they're getting the proper care that they need. We also need to make sure that the community is safe as a whole. That could mean that we're bringing in more food kitchens. That means we're bringing in homeless shelters, and we're getting them the health care that they need. In terms of affordable living, we need to make sure that there's ability and enough affordable housing in Oceanside. And we also need to be able to bring in new businesses that will promote, you know, more of the middle-class and upper-class housing. Thank you.
Larry?
You know, I'm going to answer it in about five seconds, but I do want to say that if it hurts to see people who are homeless, imagine being one. And so, we need to make sure that we do what we can for homeless, especially there are veterans out there. There are people who are working two jobs that are homeless. So now we have to talk about affordable housing. The key word is affordable. How do we make that lift easier? And the only way to do that is we have to make a better mass transit system and build affordable housing near mass transit. Why? Because if we don't, and we build it in the backroads, we're also making people who are having a hard enough time with something called affordable housing, having to buy one or two cars, which is an increased burden on them if they're able to get to work through mass transit. So the first thing is, we have to make sure that the homes are affordable. But two, we have to make sure that the rest of it's affordable, the transportation's affordable. And if we do those two things, we concentrate on building by mass transit, I think we'll be able to have a victory.
Thank you very much. You're watching a special election edition of North County Roundtable featuring candidates for Oceanside City Council District 2. We're going to take a short break and return with more questions for the candidates. Welcome back to this special election edition of North County Roundtable. I'm your host, Kent Davey, and we're speaking with candidates for the Oceanside City Council District Number 2. First up on this round of questioning is Christopher. Do you support the SOAR initiative on the November ballot, and briefly, why or why not?
Thank you. No, I will be voting no on Measure Y or SOAR. It is a direct violation of private property rights. I am a farmer, veteran, and small-business owner. I grow commercial crops, and one of those crops is coffee. I would like to make infrastructure improvements that will require a loan and the normal process through the city of Oceanside to make zoning changes and get approval. If SOAR passes or Measure Y passes, it will require for me to have a roastery on my property, an entire vote of all of Oceanside. That will be very expensive. It will limit business opportunity, and it will crush my family's dreams of having a roastery in South Morel Hills. Thank you.
Larry?
I absolutely support SOAR, Measure Y, but here's why. I feel it's a little far outreach-ing, overreaching. I also feel that it's a little confining, but at the same time, when I have developers wanting to dump tons and tons of money in order to push an idea that they're calling aggravation, when in reality, it's aggravation, it makes no sense. You've got to stop bad ideas, and the only way that you stop bad ideas is you stop them cold. If SOAR passes, we get an opportunity. The other thing is very simple. I do not want to add an additional 1,500 cars on the road to create a higher CO2 footprint, to create terrible, terrible problems with congestion and traffic, which we already have on 76, and make our climate worse. It's a bad idea. It's getting worse, and we need to move forward and pass SOAR.
Okay. Chris?
I think what is most important is that the people of Oceanside determine the legacy of Oceanside. I've currently heard three or four plans of how they plan to develop South Morel Hills. There's an AgroVision. There's an Agrotourist. There's high-density housing, and there's open space. Ultimately, I am in favor of some small businesses who will want to open a winery, build bike trails, bring infrastructure roads out there, have the ability to have a cost coffee roaster. But what I'm totally against is having high-density houses in an area that is currently what I consider green space. I believe that what we need to do is build that District 2 plan that takes into consideration all the opinion of Oceansiders, and it lets allow the people of Oceanside to determine the legacy going forward and the legacy of Oceanside for the future.
Okay. Carrie?
The city of Oceanside is 42 square miles, about 175,000, 180,000 residents. We have roughly about 3,400 acres left of farmland. Traffic is a big concern for everyone. I will be voting no on this proposition, and the reason why? Because I have concerns coming from both sides, the proponents and the opponents. I think it's time to hit the reset button. I think it's time to take another look at what we're talking about doing with those 3,400 acres. We have a new city council that will be seated after the election of November the 6th, and I really believe we should allow the new city council to be able to address the concerns of the community of South Morel Hills and the North River Farms development. Thank you.
Okay. Dana?
I 100% support SOAR and Measure Y. I was out there getting signatures with many volunteers from my action organization. One of my VP board members, her family are the pioneers of South Morel Hills, the Gilligan families. They own over 300 acres. They've been there for decades. They support Measure Y. I have to disagree with Mr. Rodriguez says. I think that he's been misinformed, that he will not have to pull all those permits. Measure Y and SOAR is critical, especially since the lilac fires in December. I think we all seen how terrible it was. I've got a picture from my backyard, the fire from Jeffrey's Ranch. Measure Y is only going to implement what we already have. That land out there is zoned, two and a half acres per dwelling. It's been that way for the last 40 years. That is what we've had, and that's the way that it should stay. You know, we've consistently had councilmembers that are disregarding the community, and therefore, we decided to block and get this Measure Y on the ballot. And I would like to point out to everybody that there's a fabulous article written by Claudia Pippenberg on August 10th from Coast News, and it's a brief history of the successful SOAR initiatives in California. It passed and renewed twice in Ventura, or Ventura and Napa counties. I'm sorry, I guess I'm over the time limit.
Thank you. Larry, do you think the city of Oceanside should allow retail pot establishments, and do you support medical pot establishments?
I support medical marijuana wholeheartedly. I've done a lot of work with our transitioning veterans. Many of them suffer from PTS disorder, and medical cannabis has been incredibly helpful to them. Some of them are agoraphobic, so I would look at delivery. I also think it's something that we don't need to be afraid of, and that, I think, is where our real problem is. Think, you have to look at cannabis as a medicinal drug with psychotropic properties as opposed to a psychotropic drug with medicinal properties. And making sure that we put dispensaries in areas that can handle them, not around sensitive places such as churches and schools, we're doing the right thing. And I would never deprive anybody of being able to alleviate pain from something that's not an opiate.
Okay. Thank you. Chris, same question.
I am in favor of it for basically two reasons. One, the medical science behind the benefits of medical marijuana has shown that the cannabis can be very helpful. So I believe on the medical side of things, this is something that we could be a step above the other local communities. And the second thing, I believe this is a business opportunity. I believe that, you know, right now, some of the local communities haven't decided on this. And Oceanside has always been last. We have always been the people who have been the followers. What we need to be now is, we need to be the leaders on this. We need to be smart. We can't just have dispensaries on every corner. We can't just have, you know, medical marijuana in the hands of children. But what we need to do is, we need to be smart. We need to be able to bring a new industry that is currently going to butt in industry in the neighborhood about to come out, and we need to be at the forefront of that. So yes.
Carrie, same question. Retail pot establishments and medical pot establishments?
Thank you, Kent. I support the cannabis business for medicinal and recreational. I survived the '60s. I strongly believe in the city council and staff should come up with a taxing plan to put it on the ballot for the voters to vote it up or vote it down. It needs, the business needs to be heavily regulated, taxed, controlled, a very good potential revenue stream that our city manager, Michelle Lawrence, could use to help with our financial shortcomings. We have a lot of needs in this city, and we need to find a strong additional revenue stream that can help offset those financial shortcomings. Thank you.
Dana?
I support medical marijuana. I think the voters passed it, and we need to consider that. However, once again, our city council majority, they picked an ad hoc committee that didn't include the police and fire. I spoke at many of the meetings, and when you disregard the community such as the chief of police and the chief of the fire department, we have problems. The city has came a long way in terms of the way that it is now, you know, from what it was back in the '70s and '80s. We have a huge opioid issue epidemic right now, so there's a fine line between, you know, opioids and medical marijuana. I think, you know, some people use it as a stepping stone, so I think that we need to be very mindful of how we do put it in place. You know, we have kids out there that are testing the waters, and we need to make sure that it's, that it's, you know, from day one, you teach your kids to stay away from drugs, say no to drugs, say no to drugs. So it's critical that it's implemented in a very positive way for the medical marijuana folks that require it, that rely on it. But at the same token, I think that we need to make sure that when it is in place, that we have the taxes revenue from it. That's kind of, again, putting the cart before the horse, you know? If we're going to do it, we need to have the taxes. Thank you.
Christopher?
The voters have voted that they approve, and it's legal here in California. The cities are taking their time to figure out a game plan and how to handle it on a local jurisdiction level. I support farmers growing all legal crops in California, including cannabis. I support patients having safe access to cannabis to meet their medical needs. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, there's been much discussion in North County or San Diego communities generally and including Oceanside of the notion that it's time to ban or heavily regulate short-term rentals. While it may not affect District 2 quite as much as District 1, what's your feeling on that topic?
It's a really interesting topic here. I like to break it into a couple of different slices. One, if we're looking at the shore, those are million-dollar homes. That is tourism. That's where tourism is focused. It's focused at the beach. I'm 100% in favor of short-term renters where the affordability of that house otherwise could not go back to the people. Where I have a different approach is when we get more inland, especially into Oceanside, when you have Airbnbs, when you have foreign investments coming in. We have homes that could be going back to the people, that could make it more affordable for the people who work in Oceanside to be able to live in Oceanside. That's where I have a strong opinion against short-term renters, at least long-term, short-term renters. But when we look at the beach, when we look at tourism, those short-term houses, people love to vacation at the beach. I'm 100% in favor of that, but I think we need to be smart. I think we need to segment it where it's tourism and where it's community.
Okay. Thank you. Carrie?
Thank you, Kent. When you look at potentially the financial revenue stream that will be coming in over the next few years, we're not going to attract a Costco. We're not going to attract any more car dealerships. So other than the cannabis business, and with the additional increasing of tourism, where will that new or increased revenue stream come from to offset, once again, the financial crisis we're facing? Tourism, short-term rentals, hotel developments, all of that's very positive. And if we can come up with a good plan to address the concerns facing short-term rentals, and the city's in the process of doing that, I support it 100%. Thank you.
Okay. Dana?
I have to disagree with Carrie in the fact that I think that I would love to see a Costco in Oceanside, and I would love to see more car dealerships. I think that the city deserves to have more vibrant businesses. We need to encourage more businesses and more growth. In terms of the short-term rentals, I think that those are okay, too. I think that they just need to be regulated to a certain respect, even all the way out to my neighborhood, as long as the people are mindful of the neighbors. And the neighbors will call code enforcement or whoever if there's an issue. We can collect a lot of revenue from the TOT taxes from the short-term rentals, and I think that we shouldn't eliminate that opportunity to be able to get money, more revenue for the city of Oceanside.
Christopher?
I think Oceanside needs to look at managing revenue streams and opportunities like a business. And as a business owner, I know firsthand that you must implement a system, you must have rules and action steps, and you must manage results. Right now, the city of Oceanside is far behind all coastal cities when it comes to managing a robust short-term vacation rental program. We need to be charging a fee in order to issue the licenses. That way, it can pay for a new staff member to manage the collection of the transient tax. Right now, there is, in my estimation, 300 to 400 properties that are renting their home in the city of Oceanside and are not paying transient taxes. That is at least $2.5 million of lost income that we are losing every year because we don't have a program. I believe in having a program, we can hire the additional code enforcement, the additional support needed, and it will be paid for by the collection of this additional transient tax. We should also be negotiating contracts directly with VRBO and Airbnb on collection directly in order for them to be in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
You know, there are two You know, there are two issues to this that I'm looking at right now. First of all, when we talk TOT tax, we gave away the store when we built hotels and then gave away the taxes on them. So I have an issue with that. But when we're talking about short-term rentals, there's a couple of things that we need to know. Number one, even if you have a short-term rental, there's a community there. How do we make them feel better about what's happening as well as getting that revenue stream? Every short-term rental must have either a management company or somebody on call 24/7 to be able to handle what issues there are, so we're not taxing our police and fire for things that we shouldn't. The other thing that we need to understand is this: You don't want to stop small business owners, including investors, of short-term rentals to not be able to do that and not be able to garner revenue and then bring some of those taxes to us. We have to make it easier to be able to do it. That's why you have to put systems in place. And once you do that, you're able to have repeatable systems that make sense. And that's really what we have to look at, in my opinion.
Okay. That brings this program to, the questioning section of this program, to a close. Thank you. We need to go to closing statements then, and I think by agreement, we decided Christopher would go first and come down this way.
Great. Thank you. Oceanside, I'm running because I want to make Oceanside better. I believe that City Hall needs a breath of fresh air, a young mind and a business mind that has experience with several successful businesses. I'm a family man. I'm a veteran, I'm a farmer, and I'm a small business owner. I've been walking the streets, and I understand that the three most important needs in my district right now are housing affordability, public safety, including cutting back on crime and gang violence, and we're not the business-friendly city that we all want us to be. I want to make Oceanside the most business-friendly city in San Diego County. This November, vote for Christopher Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
You know, this November, we do have a plethora of people that you can choose. As far as me, I have no baggage. I've not run before. I've not been in the seat before. I'm running because I want to be able to be that voice for District 2. And I want to be able to be that person who's able to listen to everybody and anybody on that council without baggage, without preconceived notions, and without concern of what it may mean to disagree with somebody. I want to be able to represent our district with the ethics and integrity that I have tried to live my life with. And I hope that as we canvass, as we talk, as you hear more, that I'll be able to earn your vote November 6th, because we're all interviewing for a job.
Thank you. Chris?
Once again, I'm Chris Kagan. My motto is fighting for a better tomorrow, today, the future is now. As I said multiple times, we need a District 2 plan that brings in all the issues, that is focused on growth and opportunity, risk and cost management, and the legacy and happiness. One of the issues that you didn't hear from any of the other candidates that we talked about was education. Our education in Oceanside is failing. There was no question around this. I believe if you're out there and you have a family, and you're thinking about your kids, and you're thinking about our educational system, that is one of the one issues that I'm putting at the forefront of my campaign. I believe that our kids need to have a future in this city. We want our public schools to be the best that they can be. There's opportunities there, and really, what I want it to be, I want Oceanside to be the best city. I want us to come together as one. That's why this November 6th, vote for Chris Kagan. Remember, I'm fighting for a better tomorrow, today, the future is now.
Thank you. Terry?
Thank you, Kent. Terry Johnson for District 2. Check out my website, TerryJohnsonForCouncil.com. I've always said elections have consequences. When I served you before as your mayor and council member, during that time period, Oceanside probably experienced its greatest economic expansion in recent memory. A lot of the great things that you see happening around this city happened during that time. We either planned it, we either built it, but it happened. We were able to seek consensus, build consensus, and we got a lot of things done. It wasn't easy, but we were very successful in moving this city in the right direction that it needed to go. And I would say if you want to make sure the city stays on track, please consider, once again, allowing us to serve you again as your district rep for District 2. Terry Johnson, November 6th. Thank you.
Dana?
Thank you, Kent, and thank you, KOC T and Tom Reister, for this opportunity. We do have a very limited resource in terms of getting our news out here in Oceanside. I'm a small business owner for 30 years. I've been fighting for our neighborhoods. I think everybody at this table cares about Oceanside. I really do. But I have a proven record. I've been fighting for my neighborhood. I fought against the Melrose Extension. I will continue to fight against it. It's going to take properties by eminent domain, 14 properties. It will devastate Jeffrey's Ranch, the Marisol Areas. It will take portions of Gwahomi Lake Park. This is just absurd. We should be protecting our parks. I think that it's critical that Measure Y passes for Oceanside because we consistently get a council that makes promises, but then as soon as they get in, they get bought by the developers. And I can assure you that that won't happen with me. I do believe in regulations, and on the way here, I stopped at the post office, which, by the way, I don't know who has the maintenance on that, but, I mean, Terry Johnson had signs everywhere, and there's rules we all follow in this city. And we all agreed to sign that the signs will not go out until October 6th. I don't feel I'm above the law. My family was with the law. I think that all of us need to respect each other as we're equal. It's been 16 years since a woman's been elected to this council. Councilmember Sanchez is the only advocate and councilmember that has been fighting for the neighborhoods. While her and I have had some disagreements, she is the best person on the council at this time that represents the neighborhoods. And so I hope that everybody will take a strong consideration and elect me for the next council member for District 2. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of you, Oceanside City Council District 2 candidates who participated tonight, for your willingness to serve. If you're an Oceanside resident and have any questions about the district in which you live, please log on to the city of Oceanside website. And thank you for watching this special election edition of North County Roundtable. KOC T will also be playing programs featuring the pro and con representatives for the SOAR initiative, candidates for the Oceanside City Council District 1. All of these special election programs will be shown on Cox Cable in Oceanside, a TNT U-verse service countywide, and as video on demand on our website, koc.org. Be informed about your community by watching North County Roundtable. Thank you, and we'll see you next time.